Because it's seven o'clock, seven oh two. And we're recording. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of June sixth, twenty twenty four. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And Baron. Today is June sixth, D-Day, and let's remember those on Normandy Beach and Omaha Beach. Omaha Beach. Thank you very much. Roll call.
And Daly here. Andrea Miller to ask to be excused.
Yes.
Diane Joycey.
Here.
Mitzi Zigma. Diane Rogan. You may be.
Pending, yeah.
Joan Veely.
Here.
Scott Hamel asked if I understand.
Correct.
Um, Michael Pashuk asked to be excused.
Okay, they're falling like flies.
John Daken.
Present.
And Steve Biella, Jr.
Oh, Brian's just online.
Brian. Brian. You're not here, Brian.
I apologize.
Yes.
So I'm going to mark Brian as present and Steve Biella, Jr. I'd say not yet.
Okay, if we see him, that'll be fine. Okay, John, you're seated for the evening?
Thank you.
All right, and I just want everyone to know that Diane did a great job sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you for covering for me, and I did have a chance to listen to the recording. Tim, we need to get you better on the microphone, please. It's still a little bit hard to hear. But everyone else was cool. I'm also going to announce, I just want to take a moment before we dive into the approval of the minutes about. It's brought to our attention that Thomas Kokomo will not be here. And that we are also waiting on engineering reports for the Kokomo project regarding Randdecker. And so we wanna, I just wanna see how the commission feels about just continuing that public hearing to the next go round.
I think continuing makes sense because we're still waiting for staff comments regarding the water issue. And the hearing remained open, so we need that information.
Okay.
Can I, should we should? That Steve Biella, Jr. has joined the meeting? Oh, yeah, there he is. Remotely, so I just wanted to note the time.
And Steve.
Four before you actually start.
Yeah, and Steve will ask that you be seated this evening as well, Steve?
No problem.
Okay, all righty, just give me a head.
Make a motion to bring a item six B up on the agenda now. Out of order. Worst.
Okay, so that's bringing up the Randdecker?
Yep.
Okay, all righty, do we have a mo, we have the motion, do we have a second?
We're all second.
Okay, thank you, Diane.
And I make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
Okay, motion by Mr. Zigma.
You gotta vote on the first motion.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, you're, I'm, you got, you got in that charge mode now.
Actually, she's got me covered. All right, so we have the motion and the second to move it up as an item on the agenda, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Steve?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, so moved. Okay, now.
Now I make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
Okay, motion to continue.
The Kokomo.
That would be June sixth twenty.
June twentieth.
Okay.
Second out.
Second by Ms. Joycey, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, so moved. Okay, thank you. So Randdecker is off the agenda if anyone is interested. Okay. Approval of the minutes. We have some here for November second, December seventh, December fourteenth, and May thirtieth. Okay, so. November second. Did we have a chance to look through those?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Zigma.
A second.
A second by Ms. Joycey for the discussion on those. And all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Steve Biella was also involved with November second. Steve, did you have a chance to vote on that?
He didn't.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you.
In here, Brian.
Brian, I heard the first time. No, he was the first one, it was Steve, I was waiting. All right, December seventh. And present for that was Commissioner Rogan, Daly, Joycey, Millard, Zigma, Veely, Dyken, and Biella. So guys, did you have a chance to review December seventh, twenty twenty three? And do we have a motion or corrections?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Joycey, second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, those opposed, so moved. December fourteen, twenty twenty three, present was myself, Ms. Joycey, Ms. Daly, Ms. Millard, Zigma, and Biella. Ms. Millard is not here. But we have the remaining, so any problems with December fourteenth that you found?
Will move to accept.
Move to accept by Ms. Joycey. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And abstaining.
I abstained.
Abstaining. And okay, Steve Biella said yes, okay. Those opposed? Abstentions? Was Mr. By, Mr. Dyken.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Now we're moving to May thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and leaping forward in time. And, and present was Ms. Daly, Mr. Zigma, Ms. Joycey, Rogan, Millard, Hamel, Dyken. Further corrections on May thirtieth for the minutes.
Move to accept.
Okay, by Ms. Joycey, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dyken. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And I'm abstaining. Okay, yes.
A comment, I just wanna comment that Ashley started her position at the end of January, and you had that gap where we didn't have an administrator. She, as well as Alexa, have done astounding job catching up on the minutes. I just wanted you guys to know the work that got put in for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, thanks, because I know that had to be very tedious, because those meetings were running till one AM.
You listened to those?
Oh, my God.
Listened them, but Alexa didn't.
Oh, my God, I hated living through them. I couldn't imagine.
Reliving them.
We're double checking that we're, that you're now caught up, but we're just.
Okay, all right, well, that's good.
We know up more big packages like that.
Thank goodness, okay, and no more late, more meeting, late meetings, that's, I'm done with that. Commission Business, in accordance with the eight twenty fourth of the Connecticut State Statutes Review and Recommendation Regarding Proposal of a Sidewalk Connecting Around Berlin High School, McGee High School, Willard Elementary School, and Hubbard Elementary School. What do we have on this eight twenty four? It's recommended to go around the schools?
Right there.
Mahoney is on.
Oh, okay, Mr. Mahoney.
I would like to defer to him. He presented to the town council on this as well, and we have a few things we'll share as soon as we can get them off on the screen, but I think he'll do the presentation.
Okay, you're on, Mr. Mahoney.
Well, you can't hear. Wait, 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 time up, time up, time up. I can't hear.
You're muted, you're muted.
See if you can unmute it at this end.
Sorry about that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, so we had the opportunity to apply for a transportation alternatives grant through CROG for additional sidewalks, and this is it's an opportunity that comes up, you know, periodically, it would be for future grants and federal fiscal years twenty twenty six through twenty thirty. But obviously, in the plan of conservation and development, we identified that we wanted to expand and interconnect our sidewalk network. We all know we have missing sidewalk segments. And this grant, we decided because of the credit criteria that we would concentrate on areas around schools. So we think, and we couldn't get, we couldn't afford all of them, but we did do, we're proposing sidewalks around that three-school cluster of Willard, McGee, and Berlin High, and then also in the vicinity of Hubbard. And, you know, it's various segments on Kensington Road, Four Rod Road, we create new sidewalks on Lower Lane, some Meadow Lane, Wilcox, et cetera. So, you know, it's really just to provide, you know, primarily, the focus is to provide like safe routes to schools. But also, at the same time, we realize that the, there's a lot of recreational park facilities that are at or near schools, so this is providing, you know, families the opportunity to walk to these facilities as well. And as you know, we already have sidewalks out on Norton Road that go out to connect into bicentennial park. So these sidewalks will connect more neighborhoods to that. Plus, you know, previously, we've been focusing on kind of extending sidewalks out from the Kensington Center TOD area and Farmington Avenue, and you know, as you, as those of you who've been around, around this, this section for a while, that we've done sidewalk projects over many several years, and it is, this particular grant program has a higher ceiling than a lot of the others. We're also planning on applying for a connectivity grant program or next spring in the next round, but this, this has a three point two million dollar ceiling for the grant. So we're, we're taking the opportunity to apply for a number of sidewalk segments with this project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, terrific, Commission.
Just let us know if there's any other maps you wanna share. I just brought up the overall.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think. Yeah, I don't think we need to go through all, I mean, we have, again, maps that show kind of, we can just flip through them if you want, the parks, the open space, the, and we looked at crash data, we looked at, you know, all these things, but I think this, you know, you all are very familiar with the sidewalks and what we're trying to accomplish here, so I don't think we have to go through it too much, but just to say that this grant does require a twenty percent local match. It's gone through the town meeting, been approved by the council, goes to the Board of Finance next Tuesday night. And next Monday, I make a presentation to CROG. We kind of made it through the first round, this is the Transportation Committee, and then they're expecting to make a recommendation to DOT on the selected projects by the end of, the end of June. So again, fast track in terms of kind of moving through the process, but then this is for future federal fiscal years, so nothing's gonna happen right away. But just, and I'm looking at this map, and to remind everybody, we did get a eight hundred thousand dollar connectivity grant in twenty twenty three. So we're hoping to get started on that project probably next spring. And, you know, various sidewalk segments that are in brown on this map, if you can see them. Places like some on Norton Road, Percival Avenue, et cetera. So, you know, it's just a continual process, as you know, you've mandated sidewalks and a lot of subdivisions, but there were you know, a lot of areas developed before that, there's some gaps, so we just wanna make it a more walkable community. I would say that I was down Memorial Day weekend to, you know, rode around in these areas, and one of the questions I've gotten from Council, Board of, and Board of Finance members so far is, you know, who walks to school? But one of the things I observed is, is, you know, parents walking their children to school at, at Willard and such, and, you know, this is also something that's a good, you know, we want the walkable community. It's good for fitness, good for lots of reasons, so we'd like to, you know, do these sidewalks with emphasis on schools.
June.
Just, just a thought, and maybe we're not responsible as Berlin Town, but as we're building all these apartments on Berlin Turnpike.
Yes.
As we want to connect probably those living residences to the different businesses along the way, I don't think we'll have sidewalks as a part of those plans, is that something in the future we might see a possibility so people can walk to their work destinations if they're living in apartments?
Yeah, I mean, the, the map that you have up now, I believe, has the, you know, we have a future sidewalks. You know, we kind of, and I was just talking about this, this, these sidewalks, but when we started to look at it, we kind of looked beyond what are the next steps, what are the next steps? So those side, those sidewalks, at least the first piece of it would be on that map that you have there, and, and what we're thinking is, you know, we have a sidewalk network that, from Webster Square Road, so if we can go on Wood Lawn and get some on the Berlin, Berlin Turnpike frontage plus deming. You know, we got, you know, all those apartment units, the two hundred, the one hundred, eighty-eight Fieldstone Crossing that are, you know, that are already there, we have the Mobile Home Park. So we've got a lot, you know, we're gonna have a lot of apartments in that area. So that's, you know, again, something we put on the future. We have to look for opportunities for these grants. Also, there's a three-town planning effort that's being led by the Capital Region Council of Governments. And, and CROG applied for what's called a Raze Grant, which would look at the Berlin Turnpike corridor if I'm a, particularly from a pedestrian and safety point of view. So they're gonna be looking at these issues, big picture. It's, it's Newington, Weathersfield, and Berlin. They applied for, you know, a large planning grant. And we, each town had to put in like a thirty-three thousand dollars for the match, but most of the match came from CROG and DOT. And so this is another long-term, you know, long-term effort to look at that whole issue.
Jim, I got a couple little questions. I see on Ford Road, basically across from the new
Complex?
Basketball. It's complex. Yeah, I see putting, there's red lines there. Those sidewalks were supposed to be put in by the, the complex, the basketball complex. And I see them in this project, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there's not a, that should be a green, I think if you look at that area, that's a green line. And the key for the green line says bonded by developer. So, yeah, we hope to, we hope to, we gotta deal, we gotta deal with that bond issue, either get the bonding, either have the developer do the sidewalk or crawl the bond, and we wanna get that done as part of this next project.
The green lines on the side of the project. But the project was supposed to complete the sidewalks across the street. There was sidewalks placed there in two different places on Four Road, and then there was gaps in between them. And that's why and the green line is a different one. That's what I'm looking for, the red lines across from the project.
So we have two sections that are bonded for there, and they, I believe, engineering has reconciled the whole thing. That, what Hatchery Brook was responsible for was actually south. It filled a gap, and then the new basketball fills a gap south of that. And then there's sections that the town doesn't, you know, that are old, you know, they didn't have.
Okay, well, because those sidewalks that are, on that side of the road, project was put in there years ago, and there's sidewalks there, of course, they were never used.
Yeah, they're just gaps. Well, actually, there is one portion there that we have, we will double check with engineering, but I I think we reconciled all the map, the, the, they plan maps with the bonding with the, with this map. We worked hard to do that, so. But there is one little section I'm curious about.
And the other one, I got a question is Magnolia Lane, I think it is.
Yes.
And why we're doing Main Street? Most of Main Street, and then Main Street toward Berlin Street is not being done, so. You know, on Main, the main drag there with trucks going down the road earlier today. You know, I think it's more useful to have sidewalks on Main Street than Magnolia Lane. Magnolia Lane's a dead end.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're we're doing, you know, we're proposing both. I mean, and just to say also on this project, I mean, this is, as I said, this is gonna take a few years to get going, and we've got other grant, and other grants we're gonna do in the meantime, so we may fine tune the exact segments, and actually, more, you know, Warren and I are working now with FHI and probably gonna do a little bit of community outreach on sidewalks and on the future sidewalk plan to get comments from, you know, from, certainly from this commission and, and from the public and others to, you know, before we finalize, but this is what's in our proposal, both the Magnolia, yeah.
I have a comment, and that is regarding Four Rod Road. And this is for the southern part of Four Rod Road from Norton Road crossover near the Dunham Cemetery. I guess that would be a good marker for it. But that is all an industrial area there, and that's quite a long spance that takes you up before you get to Wildemere, I guess it is, is the name of the street. And I'm wondering how I'm wondering how useful that sidewalk will be. In so much that it is a much wider road than, say, your lower lane. The lower lane, I can see that being handled there, because there are people who walk and bike on lower lane. But on Four Rod Road, you may not need it yet at that. You know, because it's just, it's, it's just opens, it's open space there now, it's basically industrial space. And I don't know, we might be able to use our money elsewhere. And as, as opposed to this, this patch right in here. But lower lane, it's needed. It'll make it definitely safer. I just don't know, because the road is so thin, I'm, I'm not sure how it's gonna work out at some points in that road.
Yeah, we've, we did have WMC doing, they did some preliminary engineering looks, and we, you know, we know there's construction challenges in some of these segments also. So as I said, we'll probably fine tune things, but lower lane, Peter Parley Row, you know, finishing, finishing the sidewalks on, on Worthington Ridge, making the little connectors, and, you know, and, and certainly, you know, the, you know, we had the same, or I had the same thought, as we start to, as I start to understand this better, and you have that back entrance of sidewalk into the back of Willard School. You know, so that people in the neighborhoods could go that way into Willard or to McGee, I suppose.
Okay.
I wanna do those segments on Four Rod, but, you know, otherwise it's, it's something that we're just trying to get as best connectivity.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I understand where that's coming from. I just don't know if that's a useful segment right now at, at this juncture. And we might be able to use the monies that would, that would build that huge swath of sidewalk elsewhere in town where it would be more fruitful or to an advantage of the citizens, but that's just my thought.
Yeah, we wanted to, I mean, I know the council was interested in getting in, you know, sidewalks also related to Griswold School. So there's the segment, there's a segment on Ailing Street, and probably the first ones, it would make sense over there, so that would be, you know.
Okay. Anything else?
Deadline for the grants, so we had to make choices.
All right, and so John Dyken has a question.
So Jim, knowing that these new sidewalks are be funded by grant money, what's the plan, though? Obviously, the town's gonna have to maintain these sidewalks for the next thirty, forty years. Does the town have some say on the budget side as to how we're gonna maintain these sidewalks over a period of time? You know, it may require laying, you know, patchwork, new sidewalks, may require grinding down some sidewalks that have sort of shifted. Is there any, any information we have about that kind of plan?
Well, the town has a, you know, I mean, the town has a budget item annually for, for maintenance of sidewalks. And it's, you know, at this point, it's not really sufficient. We need, we need to put more money there also. Again, I think, you know, what we're responding to here is that I think the plan of conservation and development really, you know, as, as asking that we make this, make Berlin a more walkable community. And so we're trying to systematically pursue opportunities to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian and Steve Biella. Brian and Steve Biella, you're online. Do you have any questions for Mr. Mahoney at this time regarding this?
At this time.
Brian?
Neither do I.
Okay, all right. Okay, it's an eight twenty four, so the council is looking for our blessing. And I think we've had some, we've had some good, good concerns come up, and thank you for addressing them, Mr. Mahoney, Commission. How are we feeling, all warm and fuzzy about sidewalks? Sure. I don't have, as long as they're not in my yard, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to recommend this for approval by council under eight twenty four.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joycey has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, so moved. Okay, review of the new special, thank you, Jim. Review of the new special event, St. Paul's Parish Summer Concert at four sixty-two Ailing Street on July eighteenth, woo-hoo, twenty twenty four. Do we have anyone here? You?
No, I believe you have me.
Yes, you.
We had trouble getting hold up the church to let them know what was going on. So, because they've been working with lots of different departments and meeting with people pretty regularly throughout town. So, in lieu of, I just respectfully like to ask that you entertain me to provide information with regard to this. Some of you may have heard about it, it's something that Paul has been working on for some time. You might remember that when they built the park across where Kensington Elementary School was, it, the idea was that it would be able to be used for social events and community things. So they came in with the idea of a summer concert. They, we are utilizing our new special event application that Alexa has tweaked for us, and we looked at what some other towns make sure is getting checked off, et cetera, and that, I think you all have a copy of it, it was in your packets last week. So they've gone around and talked to each of those departments, they've been working heavily with the police department, and Fire Marshal, Health District, and specifically those, as well as the town manager's office with regard to what will be offered at the event, et cetera. My last discussion with them, while they had some that were looking to expand to serve food and make it a bigger event, they had decided that they didn't wanna start with their first year with that kind of intensity. They, you know, bring your own, it's a picnic, it's two hours in that park. Um, parking has been worked out and, and traffic control with the PD, um, and, and again, they went through their checklist. Will the event be advertised? Yes. Are they charging admission? No. No tent, no food, no beer, um, no food or merchandise for sale. Will roads need to be closed if, or traffic devices needed? And yes, as I said, they've been working, um, with the PD. Um, they won't be requiring any additional dumpsters or electricity besides what they have on the site. You might remember that they did electrify the site when it was approved as a park so that uh, that wasn't the term used for it, but it, an outdoor gathering space. Um, they'll have security and, um, they don't believe they'll need onsite medical services. So and the fire marshal did sign off on it. So that's, um, as the first year, you, you did receive the plan of how it'll be set up again, couple hours on July eighteenth. And I'm looking to ask that you, um, approve the new special event. And then moving forward without substantial changes, if they do it again, we'll be able to handle it administratively. Um, there was some discussion within the town hall that, um, and I believe with them, with the, um, traffic control that, um, once they find what the reception is, how many come up, they may need to tweak what parking will do, et cetera. But until they have the event, we really won't know. But they have their church parking lot. There's adequate facilities as far as the police department is concerned at this time.
I know you said it was a two hour event, but do you know what, um, but do you know what time this event would start?
Six to eight.
Okay.
Oh, here it is. It's, um, it's set up starting at four fifteen, the event to start at six fifteen. Cleanup time, oh, the event to end at seven forty-five and cleanup time to end at eight forty-five.
Yeah, I heard that.
Figuring an hour.
Yeah. Okay, all righty. Questions, Commission?
Um, just one, um, and that is whether or not music for the concert will be amplified.
I'm assuming it will, just having been to a lot of park concerts.
Hmm.
Um, so, but if there's a concern, we can discuss it with them. Or what that concern may be.
I just out of consideration for the neighborhood, I, I don't have a problem with them yeah, having music, but just, I mean, the hours are reasonable anyway.
You, um, in discussions with our zoning officer about another, um, musical. Um, he said there's very few, um, instruments or groups that wouldn't have some sort of ampli- amplification. It's just the nature of, of, you know, okay, if a, um, what do you call it? A string quartet, that's not likely what you're gonna have, or a, um, one of the four guys that sing.
Quartet. Barbershop. Sounds like.
Don't listen to my voice though, but, um, you know, almost any, any even a guitar or anything would be yeah, what you'd consider, you know, your old fashioned wood guitar, an acoustic guitar probably still is getting plugged in if they bought something.
Well, so for future events though, is if this becomes like some wildly popular thing and they have some Christian rock group or something come along, I mean, it could to, put a whole totally different spin on it, so.
I'm, I'm questioning with that in mind, uh, right now, I think it's seven o'clock for noise stuff, uh, PM, now seven to seven and you can construction can happen seven to seven and, and, and nor, you know, other noise. So maybe, maybe we'll wanna look at the amplified stuff if we're having these events. We thought about having it at Newport when they put a gazebo there, whatever. You know, is that maybe we should say for concert events, maybe, you know, the regulation says, uh, evening between six and nine thirty or nine o'clock, whatever, you know.
Well, I think this is pretty reasonable with six to eight.
Oh, and this is very reasonable, but I'm, I, I, I see more coming, more of these things coming and I, and I like to, I like to see it happen. I think it's a great event.
Kudos to them because you do have other towns that do them on a regular basis. Every Friday they gotta.
Sinsbury always got a concert going all the time. I go up to Sinsbury all the time where my daughter lives. You know, and they got these things going and it's a big traction to the town, you know? So if we can do this kind of event and we do it, you know, they had, we made a little park in Newport or whatever. Uh, you know, uh, you know, any of the little, uh, pocket, uh, places, even the veterans uh, thing, they'll be a good concert place a little bit, you know, uh, maybe we should make a little regulations a- a- for this type of thing. I'm for it. It's just, you know.
So I guess what we have to do is focus on this application and hopefully the town will pick it up and run with it because
Okay, yeah, okay.
Talk to them for a bit about it.
So I
Watch going to New York all the time.
If I may.
Yes.
The, um, event ti- end time at seven forty-five. I think that aligns with our construction noise ordinance. The noise ordinance is construction noise, but the town hall has, um, had a lot of inquiry and being, and looking into noise issues and noise ordinances. Um, and the police department as well as the town manager who have had the conversations with um, these people are very cognizant and involved in those conversations. So I suspect that the time has to do with that as well as darkness. They didn't want to have the event go into the evening. You know, into the, the, um, dusk and darkness hours. He did tell me that at the he was going over the application with me.
I, I'd like to see more of these events.
I do think that then, um, and again, noise is also being talked about.
Music, music, yeah, noise, a little different, different thing, you know.
Joe. Yes, I, I see that the time is set, but I could also see where this could be a big hit and whoever's playing might have, you know, a few more sets they can play and run another thirty minutes. And that'd be okay with me, but it might be helpful to have it communicated as late as with amplified noise, which seemed to be the concern originally for being brought up.
Yep, Mr. Dyken.
Maureen, um, we have, we had a history in Berlin of having trouble with summer concert events, particularly one put on by an organization like the St. Paul Parish.
No, I don't think we had a couple military concerts, but they were over at the Veterans Park.
I'm not familiar with this.
People love them.
The stepping into new territory as far as summer concerts.
Okay.
Oh, and again, this is a one-off event right now.
Okay.
Uh, they, it sounds like they've got some interest in their committee keeping, working on it and what they can pull together, but it's not regular at this time.
Okay.
Okay, I'm looking.
I know that there was a event that didn't happen, but it was gonna be Donald and Grove in East Berlin. Okay, uh, and that was actually a real famous singer, but, uh, you know, if we had something on regulations to allow it and, you know, it, it would be so much easier, you know, uh, you know, especially with the new noise problems now that you're hearing. Uh, you know, this might be something that throws a wrench in it, you know, I mean, it's, it's music. I don't have any problem. Music's great, you know, uh.
Well, we can, well, we can look at it, but, um, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Rogan or Mr. Viella online had a chance to comment on the application. Hearing none or? Yes, Mr. Viella? No, no one has.
I think everything's been addressed.
Okay, terrific. Then Commission, what would you like to do?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the new special event at St. Paul Parish Summer, the Summer Concert.
Okay, uh, we have the, what, a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigmatt, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Okay, review, next up is the review of the proposed modifications for landscape screaming, screening, screaming of mechanical installation at Precision Punch. Three oh four Christian Lane property, the Punch Realty LLC in the GI two zone. Okay.
Um, before we start this, I noticed that, uh, folks are arriving that, uh, I think have interest in the, uh, matter that has been continued.
Uh, Kokomo?
For the Kokomo application.
Yeah.
That, uh, those folks may want to know that.
All right, thank you. Okay, have a good evening. All right, um.
Really for people online too, maybe.
Okay.
What you're referring to.
Uh, the vice chair, uh, Ms. Jorsy has just announced or reiterated that there was an item on our agenda under public hearings for the subdivision application of, uh, Thomas Kokomo for the two lot subdivision at Randaker's Lane. And this has been, um, continued, um, at the request of the applicant to the next, uh, planning and zoning meeting, which will be on June twentieth. So if you're online and we're hoping to chime in on this matter, we will not be bringing it forward tonight. Thank you. So let's go back to the agenda and let's talk about Precision Punch, which always does great job with their, um, landscaping. So do we have somebody here? Yes. You, you guys do a great job. It's a pleasure. No, fine. Yes, the microphone, name and address for the record and let's hear what we have.
My name is Kevin Gregoire, president of Precision Punch and Tooling. Uh, thank you for your comments. It's nice walking in town where we go in a store and stuff. People say, are you the ones with the flowers? Our employees are proud.
Beautiful.
It did not go well with the tulips this year, but it, we, um, only about half of them came up. We had a lot of, uh, rodent activity that kind of ate a lot of the bulbs and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, they attacked.
So we will replant them next year.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Um, what we're doing, might to tell you what we're trying.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we have probably half of our facility, um, requires cooling of, um, fluids as we're grinding our metals.
Okay.
Um, we have had a system in place since we own the building. It is now old, obsolete, um, fifty percent of it isn't functioning. Very soon the other fifty percent will not, so we need to replace it.
Okay.
Um, what we're looking to do is, um, if you have the drawing in front of you, I passed in a drawing. So it's only a pad that's about eight foot by ten foot. Um, and we would put the chiller outside if you look, this is Tommy, right, this is Christian. We would be with inside the offset. It would go right here. It's about the size of my, my finger. And it would be a, a unit that maybe goes about six foot tall, about six foot wide and would sit on a cement pad. Um, and we would have piping behind it that would just sneak into the building and you won't see anything else. I was told that we need to put some plantings in front of it. Um, so this represents the plantings. We had our landscaper look at it and he suggested putting arborvitae, if I'm saying that right, about six foot tall, five to six foot tall, eighteen inches by twenty-four inches in diameter and put them with a two foot space in between because they'll expand out a bit. And I was also, uh, told that when we put our solar in, um, we got the permit approved, but there was no, um, suggestion by us and no suggestion by you that we should also continue the plantings to block the electrical on the wall. So we would, we would just continue that across there so you would not see what's there already. Um, with the idea of the arborvitae would just block all of that. So this little pad and actually what the bigger area is, is the solar panels, not the panels, but the electrical for the solar panels. Our solar panels are up on the roof. You can't see them. So our roof, not sure why, but technically we get better benefit by the panels being flat. So you can't see them. Our roof is a little pitch. All the panels are flat. It comes over inside of our building. As it comes out, there's some electrical units there. There's maybe five or six units, yay big, that sit outside. That's the only thing you see. And these plantings would also cover that. Not that it's associated with this project, but I'm told you would like to have that covered up. While we're doing the plantings, we would just continue it across that way.
So if if I remember, you had a, a, a long Demming Road after you turn off of Christian onto Demming. You had some trees that were established, uh, along that were not quite street trees, but they were sort of in.
Yeah, what, what, um, we just took those down. The problem with those is they, um, they're affecting the structure of our building. Um, they are very full. We had people
Oh, the crown.
Two years in a row. There's no sun on that side, but with all the rain, if you can imagine all the cinder block, the moisture weaved its way through, given the inside, all of our paint was bubbling and peeling with this.
Oh, boy.
And I was more, I'm an engineer by trade. I was more concerned about the structural aspects, which are fine now, but I don't want it to be an issue.
Okay.
So there's nothing we could do with that. So we took that down, um, with the intent of putting something up for this project. And our suggestion is arborvitae.
Okay.
Um, we have those trees around the other, well, we get plenty of sun and they're not blocking. If you would see it, you'd even see the wall to be, I'm not sure the right term is moss or mold, but
Yeah.
green stuff, and we'd have to pressure wash it quite a bit and
Okay.
Going through the other side of the building.
Wow, okay, all righty. Maureen, any staff?
So now what we, um, I was vice president of the company for a long time. Mr. Peterson hired me to build the building and I, I mentioned team president, um, he passed away in two thousand, I'm sorry.
He, he passed away in two thousand fifteen. He actually, when he was around, when he was younger, he made a tremendous amount of money. We, we don't make the money he made, but he owned a jet. Um, and his idea was he wanted to be able to hop in his helicopter at work, fly to the airport, take his jet and go off. Unfortunately, he became ill um, and eventually passed away from cancer. So he never actually got the helicopter. He never got his lessons. Um, so we, we, we have a landing pad.
Yeah.
We have a hanger, um, but we don't have a pilot anymore.
Oh, geez.
Never you.
Wow.
No, he was, he was all excited.
Yeah.
And he's why the place looks so good. He's a very proud man.
Well, you do a great job.
All our industrial people do look.
You have, I, I haven't seen Jim Mahoney in a while. He helped us a lot, uh, when I was up on the screen. But he was, he helped us a tremendous amount.
Yeah.
And, uh, working with Berlin has been fantastic.
Yeah, well, you've been.
We were in New Britain for a long time and that was a struggle all the time. Um, and you guys have been great.
Well, your business actually has been the benchmark. So when other businesses sort of say, ooh, landscape, and we say, oh, precision, you know, here's, this is precision punch and this is what we're looking for. And so they have something to.
Well, we had the land next to us open for many years.
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson would not sell it until whoever bought it would guarantee they would make it look good and continue it because he didn't want to dump beside them.
Yeah.
They're doing a great job also. I'm sorry, they're, they're doing a great job also. Thank you. We love being in Berlin. It's been great working with everyone here.
Yeah. I know. Anything from staff regarding this?
Just a little bit of background I wanna give. So we did search the files and I'm sorry, we didn't have this scanned to share on the screen. So this is the side of the building, um, on the screen now before the trees they've recently removed. The, um, those trees are not on the site plan. Those were not part of the, well, there was, um, there is a row of persythia, um, closer to the road. Um, and I think this, what they're proposing is, is in lieu of that as well. They must have planted these in lieu of that, probably came back as a discussion, but it didn't get switched up on the plan or anything. So it's not, um, official, but again, um, as soon as we reached out and, um, asked that if they're gonna put mechanicals there, there was some discussion and I'm sorry, we were trying really hard to get this up. So I'm not sure whether you addressed whether the mechanical could go around the side or whether you, you need to leave it on that, on that elevation.
Um, it cannot for the following reason. We're actually in the middle of some activities with other companies and my hope is we actually expand that building back. Um, so what, what, we will be in here at some point asking to go another twenty, thirty thousand square feet, I believe, back if it's possible.
Wow.
Uh, our, our hope is to, our hope is to
Tremendous.
We have some really neat opportunities that we're seventy-five percent through that we think will come to fruition.
Excellent.
So on that note, with the mechanical pad being on this northerly side of the building, the building itself is approximately fifty feet back or more than fifty feet back from the street line when thirty feet is the requirement. or more than fifty feet back from the street line when thirty feet is the requirement. So they have more than enough room meeting the setback to, um, install mechanical equipment there. Um, and as I said, or as he, he mentioned, we, I just asked, you know, they've been used as a example and that they provide adequate screening. So up to the commission to determine if the proposed is adequate and if the change to the site plan is okay.
Well, you've done a fantastic job, so I don't see anything. Oh, be quiet. Yeah, I know. People used to hide from the cops on those corner. Okay. All right, Diane.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with what's being proposed. Um, the only concern that I have is that the arborvitae tend to be, um, uh, candy for certain pests. And, um, I, the concern that I have is that from a maintenance perspective down the road, you may be finding yourself having to treat those trees. And so my personal perspective is that it's maybe, um, worth considering a mixed planting of different evergreens so that your arborvitae screen isn't just wiped out. Yeah.
Okay. What, what would be your suggestion?
Um, I'm. Native plantings, native evergreens, um, might be worth considering.
Okay.
Uh, things like mountain laurel, um, would be native and add flowers in the springtime. Um, even the forsythia would offer screening and not be such an attraction for some of these.
What are the pests that are the attracts?
Um, there, uh, bagworm is what you're seeing in, um, lots of these places that have mass plantings of arborvitae that are being totally defoliated. And, um, it's, it's a tough pest to stay ahead of and you have to.
We do have arborvitae's in front and we replaced them about three years ago. Um, I'm not sure. What, they sort of started dying, so we had to replace it. Maybe that was.
Yeah, they look like, uh, I think they look like a little pine cone.
They do.
Almost look like a little pine cone hanging on it. And if you look closely, because, uh, I know people actually have to go and cut them off and put them in a jar and just toss them out.
I, I promise you, if something goes bad.
They devour the plant.
Replace it because it's not in our nature to have it look bad.
I think it's, um, it might save a maintenance issue by having a mix.
More native evergreens.
That's just a thought.
Good with that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else online? Uh, Brian or Steve Biella? Okay, hearing none. Oh.
Is there? That's all. Does a beautiful upkeep on that building.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Okay. So go ahead, Commission. What, what's the pleasure of the commission then? See, we've been, okay. Yeah.
Sorry. I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Can you hear me good?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can hear you now. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dyken. And further discussion, all those in favor. Hi, those opposed. Oops, okay. Got you, Brian. I got you, Steve. Okay. Those opposed are moved. All right. Congratulations. No, thank you. Yeah, you, you know, keep that benchmark high. All right. Thank you. The next item up is the site plan amendment application of John Bonet, JB Construction Solutions LLC to construct a thirteen, uh, one thousand three hundred and thirteen square foot front addition and related site improvements at eight thirty Berlin Turnpike. MBL ten dash four dash one oh five dash eleven A and Lot Ten. Properties of David R. George and Catherine Labadia in the CCD one zone. Okay, let me get this here.
You can pass them out and then we'll just stamp them as received at the meeting. But you go to the microphone, tell them what you're doing and then.
Uh, thank you for having me this evening. Uh, I'm David George. Um, John Bonet is the contractor. He, he's not available tonight.
Okay.
Um, I am the owner and operator of Heritage Consultants. The business is in the building. I'm sure you all know the building. It's the old Art Powers Insurance Agency Building.
Oh, okay. All right.
We purchased the building in twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, it was in a terrible state at that point. Um, we did a renovation of the building inside and out. Um, completely gutted it. All new electrical, all new plumbing, all new heating, all new flooring, paint, trim, everything. And on the outside, added the nice vinyl siding, the stone front. I brought some photos of the building currently that I thought I would give to you. So it just refreshes your memory as to where the, what the building looks like. So what our business does is we're a, a cultural resources management firm, and you're probably asking, what does that mean? Um, we help towns, municipalities, DOT, ever-source energy developers, cell tower firms, all kinds of people through the environmental permitting process. And like deep stormwater, we, we work on those kinds of projects. We provide services that include archaeological surveys, historical surveys, surveys, surveys of historical buildings. Um, and services to help preserve historic resources across the state. And in fact, our, our, our company works through all of New England and New York. We're a fairly big company at this point. When we came to Berlin two years ago, we were a ten-person outfit. We are now forty, we just hired our forty-fifth person today. So we're doing well. Um, some of that has to do with our location. We're close to the DOT. We're close to inter-source energy. Um, but some of it has to do with our ability to leverage the highway system here to get on and off, get places quickly, um, which has really helped us out. The employee base is, right currently is fifteen people who are in the office daily. And the remainder of the people are field personnel. So they are the ones that are out in the field doing the surveys, collecting the data, bringing back information, uh, to the office. They work remotely, meaning they go from their house in the morning to the work site and home and only come to the office once a week, Fridays to drop off their materials. The artifacts they collect, uh, the things that they bring out of the field. So we're having a situation where we didn't anticipate ever growing, outgrowing the building and we outgrew it a year and a half. I currently don't have enough room for the staff I have. They're all kind of crammed into small spaces, which is not great for work. It's not given COVID, not really safe for that. So we proposed this addition to include, I think it's five more offices and a conference room. And since the building is currently on a slab and we needed storage, we proposed a basement beneath the addition. Um, and that basement will have mechanicals in it, furnace and AC, um, our internet switching board and just shelving for storage. No, no running water, nothing like that, no drains. Um, and in fact, the addition itself will not have water added to it. The existing bathrooms will stay where they are. The existing kitchen will stay where it is. So that's, that's the gist of the project. Um, we also, my wife and I also took the opportunity to purchase the land to the north, which was an eyesore for many, many years. Uh, we purchased that from Mr. Spitco. Um, we've been cleaning it out little by little by little. Um, it's taken a long time. There's lots of things that are buried in the ground. There's lots of things in bushes, you know, it's, it's tough. Um, but part of our plan for this addition is not only to build the addition, but to clean up the whole area and make that parcel a nice grass parcel for our employees to have lunch on or, you know, things like that. If we want to have a corporate event like a picnic, have it there. Um, we're not planning a development over there anytime soon. Unless, of course, we outgrow, we have again. But we wanted to combine those lots into one and make that a much more attractive space on the Berlin Turnpike. As you know, that point of the, part of the Berlin Turnpike, we've got the tint guy on one side, Mickey Fens on the other and whatever's across the street, the hotel. Much like the last gentleman, I take a lot of pride in my business and try to present our image well. So it will also include, um, we don't have a planting plan yet, and I wanted to talk to the council about that. Some plantings on the, in the green spaces as part of the addition, a couple of trees and some bushes. Um, but we can go through that as we talk. That's the general, um, gist of the project and I'm happy to answer questions.
So I just want to point out that I, um, just finished the staff report. We've been meeting with this applicant for a couple of months now. And so the staff report is on the most recent plan that the town, um, engineer gave the comments on this week. That was basically what, the bulk of what we were waiting for and any modifications that need to be made. So in your supplemental package are the, the staff notes with a couple of conditions listed. I'll go over them after, but you guys ask your questions first, but I want to give this, this to, his copy to him as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now I think it's all the stuff we probably talked about. Sure. Yeah, currently the parking lot, as you know, there's an access to Worthington Ridge. The parking lot is like a racetrack right now. Um, we probably have in excess of twenty cars come through a day. I've had two employees almost hit by cars. Um, they go through very quickly. So part of the reconfiguration was to calm some of that traffic. We have also talked about at the rear of the building where the egress is, to put a gate in the evenings and, and potentially during the day to keep traffic from going through. They go, some of them go twenty, thirty miles an hour through there. Yeah, we can't stop them, so. Yeah.
I guess you addressed, sorry. I guess you addressed the, uh, senior bought the, the other lot next door. I'm happy to hear that. Uh, and you addressed the cut of the dirt bank there and.
Yeah.
That's going to be cut down, leveled off, I guess.
We intend to, just on the other lot, all do is level it and then, you know, make sure that slope is such that it's not going to erode.
Right, right. That's what the erosion on it right now is like that. Either put a wall up or, or, or slow it down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He unfortunately graded that in an effort to improve it for sale. I didn't want.
Didn't work.
But it, it created a more of a mess than it did anything else because he destabilized that bank. So we will gently grade and fill that.
I like to see that, that it's cleaned up. That's a very important piece there, uh. And, and, you know, and the entrance, that second one was for me was for the entrance from Worthington Ridge. You know, and if you keycard that, uh, I'll be okay. Cause you gotta exit entrance on turnpike.
Right.
So you, the only ones that need to exit out the Worthington Ridge is probably, uh, place.
Right, and we're not open to the public, so there's no need for any egress through there during the day. I mean, and certainly if somebody wanted to get through or something, we can come and go out and open it up and no problem.
I would, uh, I would just say if you do put some kind of gate across there, uh, that the fire service has.
Sure.
Some access to that gate.
Absolutely.
They don't have to knock your gate down to get in there.
We also, currently that right way in the back or that driveway in the back, when we moved into the building in twenty twenty-one, we added sewer down the, down that driveway, the ass. Um, and it, it's not been paved since because I knew we were going to do this. So that will be part of the job is to pave that as well.
Glad to see improvements on that property. One I didn't expect to see.
So just because I'm trying to visually see where your proposed addition is, looking at this photograph here. Are we talking about the front portion?
Yes, so where you see the awning in the front there.
Yeah, the entrance.
That would go away and the building would bump out, starting on that left corner with that, right there. It'll go over four stalls and it will come out. That fifth stall will stay recessed in because it, it gives a little bit more of a view for when you're coming down the driveway. You can see if there's somebody in the parking lot.
Okay, and so the width of that, would it encompass the, uh, the pavement that we have currently?
It will stop just shy of that green space.
Okay.
And then the sidewalk will come off basically where the awning is now. It'll come straight down into the parking lot through what is the green space now. And then the parking will be changed such that if you think about, um, the building being here and the parking lot being a T, the parking would come in from the side. So it would make it a much more symmetrical, balanced look as well. So that's all for symmetry.
Yeah.
We just brought up on the screen, um, what's grayed out is this existing building and then the addition is Berlin Turnpike side of that. So you can see how it stepped back on the north.
Correct, yep. And that's, that's for, as you drive around, to be able to see if there's somebody in the parking lot. Cause that, that is the very most dangerous part of the parking lot is right there. And that's where two people have almost been hit by cars coming through.
So would any part of that green area in front be lost to pavement then?
That, it will be, that island that's in the parking lot now will go away, but it will, we be reclaimed with green space and a sidewalk. So there will be some, it'll be lost, but then we'll be.
Okay, yeah. It'll be manipulated, reconfigured. Okay.
And as you say, in, in this part of the, part of the drawing there, you can see there's the kind of the proposed addition and then the handicap or the sidewalk and the handicap parking spot to the north. Um, and then a sidewalk that goes straight out to kind of an island at the end. That, that will be green space.
Mm-hmm.
And then what I would like to do is plant a couple of trees in that far end of the green space and then bushes along the side of the sidewalk coming up to the building. Probably boxwoods or something that can be maintained in a nice shape.
You, you had said something about a basement.
So underneath the proposed addition, there will be a full basement, uh, and that will house the mechanicals for the addition. We'll have two sets of mechanicals. One furnace for the old part of the building, a new furnace for the new part of the building. So make sure we have enough circulation, make sure we have enough heat, enough AC, enough electrical supply to power both, both sides of the building as one.
Okay, and the access to the basement would be solely from the interior of the, of the proposed addition.
Yes, it would be in a basin stairway that would come to a landing and then turn and go down to another landing and into the basement.
Okay, but there would be no, um, office space down there?
No, ma'am, no.
Okay.
It's just.
No wine cellar or anything?
Oh, no, no. Solely storage for files and boxes and, and things like that.
All right, okay.
Equipment, small pieces of equipment.
Okay. All righty, Commission, any questions? John, June, John, June, Tim, or?
I don't have any questions. I think it's going to be a big improvement.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very big improvement. So you'll be coming back with a, uh, and skipping plan?
Um, I don't have one drawn up. I mean, I can have one drawn up. I was hoping that, um, our financing just came into place last week. I was hoping to be able to start construction and then work with the council on what that planting plan ultimately looks like. Part of it is too, because by the time the construction will be done, I'm not sure what's going to be in season for plants and that kind of thing.
And can I, um, as far as the architecturals go, I, I see that, I, I don't know what the exterior of the building is going to be wrapped in. Is it going to be a stucco? Is it going to be clapboard?
It'll be just like it is now. It'll be the batten board siding and with the stone on the bottom.
Oh, okay, so you're just gonna.
Bump that whole vision out.
All righty. And is this a lamp that is hanging over the?
Yeah, there will be one lamp. The vestibule of the building will be kind of set in four feet or so. Um, so when you come to the building, you can get out of the rain. There'll be some type of hanging lamp there. We haven't determined exactly what yet, but it's, you know, your typical outdoor lighting. There, we don't plan any lighting in the parking lot in terms of like up pointing or anything like that. No lighted signs. We have a small sign on the property already and we didn't intend on changing that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it was really going to be that one light. And as I say, we're closed at five o'clock in the evening, so.
All right, but you, you'll have security cameras or whatever around.
We do have security cameras. Yep.
All right, terrific. And the color code or whatever pretty much remain what you have here.
We're going to use the exact same material.
Okay.
In fact, it's on order, so.
Well, then I guess that just shows.
It's a material that's got a long lead time to get. It comes from Canada or something.
It comes from outlets very simply.
And it's not. And it's not cheap, so it looks nice.
Okay, anyone else? Well, I think it's going to be a great addition. Oh, yes, Maureen is giving me the
Let's let's Maureen do her comment.
Okay. Sorry, um, so I do want to just note that um we did find that the for the record that the two lots were merged. There was a lot merger map filed. And um I am going to double check the acreage that I put on the staff report. So I just wanted that on the record because it's
All right.
The staff report is part of the file because we got confused with the numbers um as we were editing when we found that merger map. Um, again, the as was mentioned, the landscaping um make deliberate um instructions for staff to know whether it needs to come back or whether it'll be handled.
And you can use prison, precision punch as a guideline.
Yeah, I mean, actually looking at their photos, it's beautiful.
It's pretty.
Building, I was impressed by that.
The um we had some comments on the um details shown on the plans, the bulk table, et cetera. That's all just um housekeeping. The um the merger map didn't, I didn't find that a Schedule A was filed with it that shows the map of their their merged lots. So that is something that we usually like to see filed as well. Um, and that um he has shows a shed, a 10 by 20 foot shed. Did you address the shed?
Yeah.
You guys, I did I miss discussion of it, so
It's on the plan, yeah.
Where the, well, the one on the northern lease property is getting demolished, the other one is getting relocated.
We'll probably remove it right to the same spot. It's the old one, the old one on the northern property.
Okay, so we don't, the the um it wasn't provided for, so we need to make sure that its relocation is compliant with zoning and whether or not you want to see that on the plan or whether um staff can review it for zoning compliance only. Um, and then noting that the D O T encroachment permit was issued and you've got a copy of that. Um, and any modifications within that regulated area um and or changes to the northerly lot, but the in within the regulated area needs to go back to would would need D O T to look at if they added landings or any other modifications up there. And as far as the um the northerly um portion that was combined, that any use of that would need to come in for zoning review.
Absolutely.
Other than that, um, oh, and um he did work through comments that were initially made on the initial plan that was submitted by the town engineer. And his most recent comment, I highlighted it here somewhere, is that, you know, they worked through. He has more verbose, but the takeaway is that he has no further comments on the application with regard to the drainage plan that eventually.
I really like all these nice trees back there. Yes, June.
Um, and if I missed it, I apologize. The applicant had stated there are going to be some grading. Is there any concern about us overseeing grading that takes place or not?
Our office certainly should.
Yeah, because it's not going to be
It's up to the commission if you want that to um, I understand he's restoring to what was um damaged or approached upon or ever.
Yeah.
Um, and therefore it would be a restoration. I don't think engineering and planning would have an issue monitoring that.
Mm hmm.
Um, but the plans would have to come through for our review if you guys want to see them.
It might not hurt, you know, you never know what impacts neighbors and um the experts uptown could just oversee it just in case.
Yeah. Yeah, I think what we would like to do on that like grading plan is what what he did is he cut that hill down and he just pulled it back into the middle of the parcel and didn't really do anything with it. So it created like a swampy, nasty area. So we just want to take the dirt he moved and just push it back.
Yeah, you just want to sort of
Yeah.
level it off and make nice, nice
And I spoke with the the a young couple moved into his house, really nice couple, very good, very good people. And I spoke with them and said, you know, we'll be cleaning up here and, you know, if you have any concerns, please come to me and let's talk about it. But we're all for it as well.
You're a good neighbor.
We're trying.
Yeah.
We're trying.
It was all neighbors.
I love neighbors. We'll talk to neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Those are people who look out for your business when you're not there.
Well, exactly, absolutely. Okay, anything else? And so what's the footer of the commission?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan amendment as proposed, subject to staff comments. Uh, and with the understanding that staff oversee the restoration of the grading.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Steve Biella, Brian?
Yeah.
And when you grow bigger, more space to
All right. Okay, uh, the opposed, so moved. Okay, congratulations. Yes.
Yes. Whether the landscaping, um, you want the landscaping plan to come back or you think you discussed it thoroughly enough with him for us to just look at the zoning compliance?
Staff can, staff can
Staff can review it.
Why?
But if you have any problems.
You know, you know what we asked for.
Yeah, that dogwood was pretty in there, yeah, those nice big trees, yeah.
I like flowers.
Okay, yes, flowers are great. All right, thank you.
So with that, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Has that not been through this process before? Um, I assume I work with planning and zoning and we talk about when the actual project can begin?
Yeah.
Okay. I I also want to thank these ladies here in particular, they've been great through the whole process. They've helped me out. I've had lots of questions. I've never done this before. They made it easy, so.
It wasn't so scary, right?
No, no, no.
Oh, good.
I guess we'll touch base. I do I swing by the office at some point?
Yeah, we we so we make a legal ad that announces what the decisions for tonight were. There's an appeal period where in that meantime, we're working on minutes and letters.
Okay.
And yeah, contact early next week, middle of next week, contact us and we'll help you through next steps.
Perfect, I believe.
Okay, outstanding.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. It's not quite yet dark.
Second time they've been complimented tonight. Their heads, their heads may get a little bit
All right, Tom, Dan, uh, public hearings. Uh, do we have a call for the public hearings? I don't think so, right? Because these were opened already, right?
Right.
So the first item is a special permit with site plan amendment application of David Camacho, Camacho Enterprises LLC to add a proposed automotive de used dealer used for Berlin zoning regulations six G three G and 11 R at 86 Wood Lawn Road, property of J and S Enterprises in the BT one zone. And this was opened on April 18th. Okay. All right. Hi, how are you doing today? Good, good, good. I just wanted to, I just wanted to get your information in front of me. Give me just a second here. Oh, here you are. Okay. I swear I got more papers going out than coming when I came in with. Okay, all righty. We're ready for you.
Opening for Maureen right now.
Okay.
Spoke to
Oh, good. I thought you were waiting on me.
So so we do have updated comments um from our town engineer. Um, they are very recent comments replacing the comments of um March and they're in your supplemental package, I believe. So I'm just going to read them out loud to make it easier for everyone as
Yes.
especially with some members on um remote. Based on our review of the revised site plan dated 5/15/2024, as well as coordination with applicant's design team, we take no exception to the proposed stormwater management system that consists of subsurface infiltrator galleries. No further comments on this application, but have provided the recommendations below as these drawings advance to construction level detail so that site work contractor is clear on proper installation of this system and other improvements. And then he mentions a number of items that should be shown on the drawings for permitting. Um, as far as the planning and zoning, um, I'm sorry, let me jump down to my notes on this. They supplied the comments at the last meeting, I believe, if not before. And um the commission comments and concerns, um, my recommendation is to note those as conditions as well. For instance, we have this area, let me just jump over here for one second. Um, this area that's still that's shown on as grass was pointed out that it was um mistakenly, really. It was a mistake on the plan because it's not grass and there are garage doors there um that, you know, that be corrected. And then the commission, um, they did change these islands and some of this other green space to green space. Um, I think some planting plantings are required by our regulations with regard to the um terminal islands and and um other parking areas. And I think the commission should consider um what might be proposed there or able to be installed. And I'm just going to double check that I don't have any other notes, but I think that's it. All discussed last time. You might want to ask the applicant if he had any landscaping proposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Landscaping.
The last time I was told that uh I needed to put up some trees, at least some small trees or some flowers, which I would do.
Okay, and and where are we putting the landscaping again, Maureen? Just so that
You want to play out those terminal islands along the front, along the street frontage as well as? Well, there are a couple of trees on the street frontage anyway. And then as one proposed, yeah, proposed to winch maple, I think it says.
All right, so this is
Proposed to winch maple. There's so there's three of those proposed along the road, but um no canopy trees on, you know, any of the other island areas that I typically noted anyway. And and including around the back, some
Well, I mean, if we're looking at the the island and the um left hand side, I guess, the sort of cylinder shaped Yeah, you might be able to put a tree in there. And I think perhaps on the opposite side, that triangle, I would say take advantage of it. I mean, then the cars get shaded.
Yes.
I mean, people just, they like that.
There in the the um grassed areas directly in front of the building, there are um a lot of utilities going through there. So I'm not really sure they'll be able to do much of substance in that area.
The the one adjacent to the, yeah. All right, so that's understood, but you might be able to do some shrubs or something like that or or flower beds in there.
Planters.
Yeah, exactly. But I mean, I would, I would encourage you, especially with the front of the building, because from the street, um, looking at it without with just green space and nothing to sort of um break it up, it just looks very um uniform.
Yes.
And you want to actually just kind of add to it a little bit and and just bring in whatever you can. Yes. Okay, commission? No questions, Mr. Dyken, Ms. Daly, online, Brian or uh Steve Biella? Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, do not.
Brian, anything from you?
I'm all set.
Okay, all righty. Yes, June.
So are we asking him to bring the plan to the office staff for approval then?
For the plantings?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I think it'd have to, it'd have to be an administrative approval. And then obviously, if there's any kind of problems or questions or concerns, um, it would come back to us.
Thank you.
All right. And
Handle a lot.
Yeah, okay. All right. Oh, yeah, public. And we are in the public hearing, so is there anyone out there on Zoom land who's watching in? Who has any comments or questions regarding this application? Hearing none, going back to the commission.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, we have the motion to close this public hearing by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, great. All right, so that's closing. Um, moving on to item C because B and B has been dismissed till uh June 20th.
Well, yes, I don't think anybody's online. There's extra.
Okay, uh, application of Nicholas Maurizio, um, care of Colliers International, prepared by attorney Sullivan at properties owned at 550 554 Berlin Turnpike Associations in the BT one zone for the application of the site plan amendment approval for the property at 550 554 Berlin Turnpike. Um, and this is, that was part, and then part one is the the application for the site plan amendment approval. And then as part two is a two-part application submitted pursuant to the general Connecticut General State Statute, it's the eight dash 30 G for a text amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations to create a new section called the Berlin Turnpike multiple multifamily workforce housing development and a site plan approval for the multifamily housing development of 522 Berlin Turnpike. Um, but these applications have been continued to the June 20th meeting. Applications will be continued due to the terms of pending stipulation for judgment. An extension's been provided by the applicant. The date of the required court hearing on the stipulation has been set for June 18th, 2024. The public can attend and participate. Please contact the planning and zoning department for any questions. That's item. That's item C under a public hearing, so we're just going to continue that, I think. Yep.
No, it was continued at the last meeting. It was continued to the next meeting.
Okay, I just
Knowing the hearing date, you continued it to the 20th.
Okay. All right, good. So we're out of the public hearings and into the deliberations. All right, the first under deliberations is special permit site plan application of David Camacho for Camacho Enterprises. This is the development we just talked about at 86 Wood Lawn Road. So what's the flavor of the commission there? Any questions, concerns that we haven't covered? Any thoughts? Brian, Steve online? Any questions or concerns regarding 86 Wood Lawn Road, which was the applicant who was just here?
Nothing at this time.
No, okay. All right, so um is there a notion to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve um the special permit um subject to the uh comments that we've had to correct the plan um at the rear of the property to show accurately the garage doors um and uh other staff comments regarding any other site issues and leave it to staff to work with the applicant for uh boosting the landscaping.
Okay, that's the motion by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Zigma. Do we have further discussion? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Congratulations, Mr. Camacho. The second was Mr. Zigma. Yeah, for some reason, Ms. Daly and Mr. Dyken are not chiming in anymore. It was kind of fun to write their names down, but
She was
Don't be it.
We'll remember that.
Yes, well
We will remember that.
Well, chime in.
We will.
J D is kind of difficult when I
Oh, okay.
I have a lot to do.
All right, okay.
June and I are going to have to
Well, I just don't want you guys like feeling that you're not appreciated, so I want
I just liked him seconding. It's just my flavor, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
I even hesitated, hoping somebody else
I hesitated, hoping you, all right.
All right, well, we don't have to talk about Kokomo tonight because that's moved off. Then we have item C, which is the application regarding the Little House Living, uh, which is the Christopher Smith Esquire Alter and Peterson LLC. Now, this is uh what's going on with this deliberation application will be continued, okay? This is continued due to the stipulation for the judgment. Extension's been provided by the applicant. The required court hearing stipulation has been held. Please contact planning and zoning department. Any questions? So we don't, this is going to be shoved off to the June 20th then?
It it does need to be. Hi, good evening. It's Jennifer. Um, it does need to be. We haven't received um the withdrawal yet of the affordable housing applications. Attorney Smith um had an obligation this week. I think he is planning on sending it um hopefully uh by the end of the business day uh tomorrow um to um Maureen. But we haven't received an official withdrawal as of yet. So I would, I would continue it until we have that withdrawal.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to continue the applications of Little House Living LLC. Or recommendation of counsel to June 20th.
Yes. Okay, we have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, and Mr. Dyken gets it. No, I heard his voice first. Mr. Dyken gets the second for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, those opposed are moved. Next up, applications of Nicholas Maurizio of Colliers International, prepared by, this has also been continued. Okay.
It's already been.
Yeah, alright. Wow, I looked at this agenda. I got scared. I almost called him sick, so I'm glad I stayed on. Planner's comments. Planner's comments. We're up to this, right? Are we in the same? Did I miss anything? Okay.
Only eight thirty.
This, I know, it's eight thirty. Oh, my God, this is great. Okay, planner's comments. Okay, you have a, you being Chris Edge development. Okay. Oh, the floor is yours. I'll just leave.
Yes, I actually was of a similar mindset. Chairman, that I saw the agenda and went, wow, we're gonna be here for a while, so I'm excited to be here up here at nine, eight thirty today.
We're gonna get out by now.
Wonderful stuff. So I got this to you guys very late, so I'm gonna actually read it, which I don't normally do, but that way you can kind of get an idea where I am coming from, because you may or may not have a chance to read it. Again, Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road. Chairman Veilian Commission members, I am writing as I have been approached by a creative couple, provide services which can be life-altering for some, but also have great meaning to others. The use on its face is not listed as earning relations, which means it is not allowed. But I believe the time has come for a discussion of this use that is much more mainstream than just a few years ago. They are looking to lease the building at twelve forty-four Farmington Avenue, which is the rear of the building, the home of Soulfully Vegan and Sage Energy. Use is a body art studio that would provide, one, paramedical tattoos for someone who needs to have a sensitive body part recreated on their body due to breast surgery or even gender-affirming, excuse me, gender-affirming tattooing. Two, scar camouflage to hide a scar from an accident or even violence. Three, stretch mark revision or modification to lessen the exterior effects of childbirth. Four, permanent makeup. The inability to grow eyebrows due to chemotherapy or similar. And traditional tattoos from eighteen to eighty-eight year olds. The demographic of when a person gets a tattoo and why has changed dramatically, especially over the last decade, since Liberty Tattoo moved from Farmington Avenue to Demming Road in twenty fourteen. I've heard stories of people even in their eighties who've gotten tattoos of their loved one's name or likeness after they passed through the amazing connection of being married to them for over fifty years. I'm looking for this commission to guide me as the couple I'm working with are planning on having a business, which is more along the lines of Premier Medical Aesthetics, which, if you haven't seen them, they bought the condo that used to be the investment house, which is in the front of the Dance Step Building on Farmington Avenue. And if you don't get a chance, it's amazing. It literally feels like a doctor's office, even though she's doing botox and the like. She was in the building across from Upper Vision State Coffee. So, right where I was. They're looking to have more of a clinical feel than one that is dark and unwelcome. Their concept, which is shown on the following pages, which I put in there, is to bring a vibrant, creative and positive business to town that would provide all five things above and potentially in the future, a wholesale location for the tools of their services. My intent in having an open discussion with you was to find out whether you feel that now is the time to look at adding a tax amendment for the CCD two zone where they are looking or a different zone in Berlin. As you can see above, this is a lot more than just a Harley Davidson tattoo. It is helping people live more full lives, whether through traditional tattoo or more importantly, permanent makeup, assistance in helping individuals feel whole again, or even being able to camouflage something that is not visibly pleasant or even something that brings back bad memories. I welcome the opportunity to discuss this with you as the demographics of Berlin are changing, as is what people are looking for. I do not wish to completely change things, but do want to find out if pursuing a tax amendment, which would allow a body art studio providing the services above, is worthwhile in Berlin. I'm sorry to be so wordy, but it was it was a conversation with them that was a lot more meaningful than hi, I want a place to do biker tattoos. It's a husband and wife. Morgan, who was the wife, specializes in the permanent makeup as well as, I guess we could call almost the reconfiguration, which is helping people post-surgery, gender-affirming, and I I thought it was at least worth a discussion. I know in the past, there's been some discussion about it, but I know I figured it was worth a discussion because they do have a great interest in doing something and again, being the kind of thing I do, I figured why not have the discussion if nothing else?
But don't we, don't we allow this permanent makeup stuff? Is there a place on Turnpike?
Place on Turnpike.
Over in the Orsini.
This was in a CCD two zone previously.
So can I give a little, the background, I remember and and figured out. A number of years ago, there was a tattoo parlor authorized on Farmington Avenue. That and a number, I'm talking twenty-ish.
Yeah.
The commission determined was not allowed use. It was a distinct type of use and therefore would be, was not permitted in the regulations. They were allowed to stay. They had gotten the zoning sign off. It was just not a clear recognition of what the zone, how to apply the zoning regulations at the time. They eventually were allowed to move to Demming Road because their property was being redeveloped as part of the TOD project. The subject of additional tattoo parlor applicants, and it's a specific license through the state to have a tattoo license, so it is, it's, it is a distinct category. Came to the commission. I gave Chris, like quickly before he, when he asked earlier this week about it, I found minutes of a commission meeting. I'm gonna say it was twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen.
February twenty fourteen.
Twenty, February of twenty fourteen, where the commission determined that tattoo parlors were still a distinct use and otherwise not permitted in the, in the regulations. Fast forward to somewhere around twenty twenty, when Mr. Orsini was putting in the new buildings, and he did have the medical tattoo occupant, tenant that was looking to occupy the space. And the approval that, then again, not realizing we were gonna fast forward this onto this agenda so quickly for discussion because this was a casual conversation earlier this week. And and then we, we decided to put it on for discussion. I didn't do further research, but if I remember correctly, a condition or part of the discussion was that tattoos that were artistic tattoos not, I mean, I guess anyone is elective for even reconfiguration. It's because somebody, you know, is more comfortable having certain body parts replicated, but was that it was supposed to be for those purposes. They weren't going to do general elective artistic tattoos as I recall, and so you were still keeping it as a distinct use. Again, the inquiries continue to come in about tattoos as kind of people are changing what their expectation of normal is, you know, you used to cover them up when you went for a job interview, and now a lot of people don't. And it's not even, in some places, it's still except, expected, I'm sure. Other places, it's not even noticed. So the Chris wanted to revisit the conversation and see. So that, yes, there are a couple of tat, or there is that the one that goes with the medical. There's the, the other one, I think, ended up leaving Demming Road. He might still be there. I'm not sure. Do you know?
No, I don't believe Demming Road is there.
Yeah, I think he ended up leaving with the, probably with COVID.
Yeah, the, the permanent makeup is actually is under the same licensing from the state. It's actually a tattoo license from the.
Right, and that's, that's why the medical came to you or.
And again, and then it's, and it's interesting because it's, if this was just the husband with just tattooing, I probably would not be having this discussion with you. But with both pieces of it, I thought it made sense because it really, it it doesn't fit in any straight category. And and it does provide a couple of different things, and I know that again, not being in the regs is a challenging thing because I know that this was not the group that was there. But I do know as things have changed, we take a look at things on a regular basis.
You know, my feeling with it is that, you know, I think it'd probably be better located on the Berlin Turnpike somewhere. Not so much in the center of town. Only because if you do make the exception, once you put it into the regulation, it opens the door. And I think that we've had great success, thank you, regarding the growth within the center of town. I just want to see it more in a positive thing. I don't want to be inundated with, you know, all of a sudden, a, a summer load of tattoo parlors all over the place. We're hoping to to still bring in the more serious more, the different kinds of businesses, but but to the point, I think it is allowed on the Berlin Turnpike. And I would think that.
Well, so right now with the caveat, you know, with the, it was very specifically presented by the, by the attorney for that property owner at the time, and I'm sorry, I don't remember those details at all. It was, it was a very lengthy conversation and, you know, I think it may have even been a couple of meetings.
There's a, there's a difference now tattoos permanent makeup and health benefits. It all comes in now regulated. A, a health department regulates sanitary, sanitary means. The needles have to be, you know, handled a certain way now. Medically. It has to be, it's regulated now through the health department. So it becomes a different breed now because it's, it's regulated through the state and the health department somewhat. So I don't know if it's any different business per se. If falls under retail or whatever in the zone because of the the regulations. I don't know. Okay, so I think it's a different ballpark than when, you know, back to Harley Davidson time. Thing, and it's a total different ballpark, and people, like I said, people do this cosmetically now that 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 is a improvement on their that they think. I never had a tattoo, so I can't tell you. But but I see it more as a medical option now because it's, it's, it's regulated through the health department now. And permits by the state. So that's my opinion that that it's you know, and and the shops themselves aren't the back room behind the curtain anymore either. You know, they have entrance like a doctor's office now and bring them back to a, a room now to, you know, so, so it's a different breed.
Absolutely. Chair, Chairman, a quick question for you. You had said the Berlin Turnpike. I'm wondering if the PSA zone might also be possible. Reason I'm mentioning it is gentleman has recently purchased a property on the Chamberlain Highway, the same building where the liquor store is out there. He's also overseeing the family across the street where Seed Bagel is going. Again, I don't know if that is something that could, could not work. I just, I throw that as another option. That's not downtown. But I know that they're, he's being very creative with what he's doing, and I just, I kind of throw it out there just as an option. So it would be the Ocean State Job Lot area and then Chamberlain Highway that corner. Those are the only two PSAs that we have.
Yeah, true. Also mentioned is a wholesale location, so it's gonna have some sales portion with their business. I don't know how that impacts the zone.
Yeah, I think we'd have to think on this one. I, you know, I, I'd have to consider it. I'd have to see exactly what is, what it entails. Because as I said, I'm thinking of the old tattoo places.
Yeah.
And to think of it differently, I have to see what kind of traffic comes in and what's, what's needed.
Are they currently working in that field? I mean, are they part of another business?
They're currently working in the field, yes. And they're just looking to basically find a spot to be able to do it.
Are they working, which town are they in currently?
I believe they have a small spot in Newington.
Okay.
So Commissioner Rogan here, just my thoughts on this. I would agree with Chairwoman Veily that I don't see it appropriate on Farmington Avenue. But I would agree that tattoos are no longer that taboo subject that they used to be. They're very common, and you even see them in the highest of professional fields. So for me, I would say that it would be fine to see them along the Berlin Turnpike or the, I could see them fitting in well in the two PSA zones that we have in our town.
Okay, well, anyone else have some feedback? I mean, obviously, it's not allowed right now, so it would.
For Chamberlain, are we thinking in this, where the Dollar Store is or across the street where? Liquor store.
I saw that zone.
Yeah, that's, both, both of those buildings would be in the same zone.
There's no determination of where, what they would be interested in at this point.
No, I don't know. It was more the, the.
Oh, this is just your thoughts. Okay.
It's, it's, it's my thoughts because of, again, this is the landlord that for years and years, not much happened. Another gentleman hasn't making the decisions. He got the Dollar Store. He ended up helping the bar reopen up. He has seed coming in.
Right.
He's been very, very proactive. That's the reason I mentioned that.
He could be interested.
I don't know if you even want that area. I'm just thinking from a perspective of
Interested.
You'd be willing, because again, those buildings, particularly if you take the building on the side
Oh, yeah.
that faces the Chamberlain Highway, someone's gonna have to go in and do a lot of work.
Yeah.
Because they've been untouched for.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of remodeling.
It's a good food for thought, but I think we're gonna have to, to figure it out if it's something that we want to pursue and something that we want to adjust as far as our.
Maybe, maybe there's a sample regulation out there. Our capable attorney up there in the picture may be able to find something that that would be easy to regulate, you know, we got design and review and stuff like that, which helps us making sure that it looks good and and stuff like that. We have the backing of the health department. So, I mean, the regulation could be my mind's pretty easy to design.
So.
In certain zones.
So I'm happy to share with you. I, I have done some research in that particular topic. It's been I, I would say maybe maybe about five years or so, but yeah, I can, I can provide what I have to Maureen and and she can distribute it to you.
That'd be great.
I'll update it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So at least it's food for thought anyway. Is there anything else with?
Not with that. I do have just.
No, no, I just, I just wanted to, I just say thank you for the time this evening. I know it is something that's a little different, and I look forward to where our conversation goes from here.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. Yep. Anything else for you?
So I just wanted to give you the heads up. We're also, staff is actually looking at regulations that pertain to party venues. It goes along the same lines as that pop-up the retail as well as the inquiries we've been getting and know of surrounding towns that have begun to allow places to, you know, I want to use this room for a party, bring in your own food, not with kitchen. So the way our regulations are, you have we have catering facilities and banquet halls. They specifically speak to the fact that they have a commercial kitchen. These are places that are popping up for people to have their kids' birthday party, but bring their own pizza or a shower or whatever it is. So we've been doing some research with regard to that and wanted to let you know that. That is something else that on the PSA zones was one of the places I was looking at as being relatively appropriate probably for that, because of the, you know, their shopping plazas with big spaces that are big box of empty room.
Yeah. And there's Pistol Creek, which should be taking advantage of too.
And then they do. We do, you know, the town does quite a bit of renting out of that, as I understand.
They do?
Or the parking rack has some kind of to do things there.
I just, I just wanted to add a thought on this. So I've been speaking to someone who has an interest in taking the formal Carlton's interior space. I remember that building was, side was gorgeous, and since then, it's basically had boards on the windows.
Yeah.
I think as, as as you said, mentioned, ours is written as banquet hall, serving food and beverages, and I know that looking at other language. And I know that looking at other language, let's call it event venue, which again, could be different events with or without food. I think we may look to pursue this in some way, because it's seeming that this is something that they want to provide. Because again, you leave it up to the people who are coming in and you're not, it's funny, you're not really providing anything except for the space and opportunities.
Yeah.
It doesn't have a regular use. So we're gonna take a look at this. I believe our assistant planner had, had found some great language in Newington that we may be looking at as well. So I'll be talking to the property owner again, same property owner who, I mean, the good thing is, he's really looking to do stuff, which is great.
Yeah.
And if we can do it in a way that moves us forward in, that'd be great. So I just wanted to mention that, but I, the idea of getting the Carlton building up and going again is very appetizing to me, because I don't think anything has happened in.
No, a long time, a long time.
I, I'd like to bring one thing up that we're making comments right now. And precision, and brought up tonight, Christian Lane, Demming Road. If you go down Demming Road, if you came from Christian Lane on the left-hand side, across from the golf place and the debt-free place that we put in there. There's a graveyard of trailer trucks, boxes. It's become a big graveyard of old, old, old trailer trucks that behind, most of them are behind gigantic trees in the front. But it's unbelievable. I went by there today and happened to see one dead tree and look. And, and it's unbelievable how many dead trailers that are stored on that property.
Where's that?
And I don't think we have that regulation to store dead trailers, you know?
With a, a karting company, it's not the karting company, which may have dead, and he may have.
I think it's GI two. I think it either was or is owned by a karting company, does dumpsters and the like, but.
Yeah, but it's, 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 yeah, but it's, it's.
Waste container.
But these, these are, are, are trailer, trailers with no doors, no doors on them or anything else. I think it is, right across from the, the golf place that we put in on there.
I'll, I'll look into it as well, Maureen, to see if I can find out the owner. I think it's one thirty-one.
Yeah, yeah, only address on that side.
They have the condos, condo buildings, so.
Willbrook and then, it's, I couldn't believe it.
We'll, we'll bring it to Polly's attention to go look. The other, only other thing I wanted to mention was, as most of you are aware, because some of you are on the P O C D Implementation Committee, and we've been discussing it there as well, is F H I is moving forward with working on zoning regs and working with the E D C on the ones with regard to the commercial areas. So we're gonna be looking to try to schedule that, I'm hoping for July. And maybe at the next meeting, we'll bring it up to you to put it on that meeting. With the number of items that keep getting pushed along and your meetings not being very predictable as to how long they're gonna be because of continuations, I've been hesitant to push forward with them until this point. But now we're, you know, under contract with F H I, we kind of have to keep it moving as well. So that's something that will be coming up. Those are two different sets of regulations. One has to do with affordable housing, a bundle there and a bundle with, with economic development, the commercial zones.
Into July, do we only have one meeting or?
And there's only one meeting in July on the eve. First meeting would be on the porch itself.
Okay.
He chose not to have that meeting.
All right. There is a couple of notes that I made, and I just want to put them on your radar, things around town that I saw. The first off is the party house on Orchard Road. I think that's what sixteen fifty or whatever. It's for sale. It is blighted. And it's got, yeah, it's overgrown. The, the field is now over two feet tall. And it's gotta be rats and mice and snakes, and that's not fair to the neighborhood. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about is the old Kensington Auto across from C V S on Farmington Avenue. It has got to stop. He must have thirty cars in that parking lot. I think he started to park them on top of other cars. There is no way, when Lenny Tubbs had that property, he only had like ten cars. He, he's gotta have at least thirty. That's, it, it, it looks like hell.
There is restriction. It is also not in his plan.
Start finding him.
As well as the police department are regularly after him, and I believe Paul has begun working with our attorney.
And I think we need to start charging him by day, because this is ridiculous. Okay, so that's the other thing. Next to, then we have that smoke shop, that new one that went in next to Kensington Market. And I noticed that he has running LED string lights, so he looked like something out of the.
I also know that Paul went out to a number of places. He found, had the lights. I don't know how.
Okay.
But he's.
Yeah, because we made the vape shop take it down.
Them somewhere else.
The old seven eleven across.
Yeah, but they were inside. They weren't outside in the photos that I saw.
Oh, okay.
An inside photo, so, and he said, no, no, those are inside. They don't, you know what the outside was.
I mean.
Right. No, no, they were buried inside. He said, you can't see them, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just not appropriate for, well, it's not appropriate for Farmington Avenue, because it's in the design district. And all of a sudden, you know, all these people just take liberty.
All there's some more things.
All right, good.
A lot going on.
Yeah. All right. So those are my concerns. So that was basically at the smoke shop, the old seven eleven. I heard they got a smoking room in the back.
Did actually go there, since, because that was brought, oh, you weren't here.
I know, but well, I.
Brought up at the last meeting. He did, he went out and it is not, it is a room that they have the smoking sales material in. There's no couch. There's no area to sit. Both him as well as the building inspectors have been there a number of times because they did have electrical permits and everything else. They've gone out. Paul went out again this week. And it's a room that the cigars are in, a humidor room. I think they have a specific name for a humidor room. That's not a humidor room, but it has a name. But it's for this, but it's not to smoke in. To store them. Yes, it's, it's where they're, they, it's a locked door, you know, the way cigarettes have to be behind the counter. It's locked and it's, it's, there's nothing that, he said, I don't know why someone would go in there to smoke because it's an open room. It's not, and it's not hard.
Okay.
He said.
All right, so that's.
That's what he took pictures of, and it had the lights.
All right. It's coming up on nine o'clock, and I wanted to get out of here by nine.
So that's on their licensing, and the state goes in and monitors that as well as our P D A. That's not zoning, zoning.
All right, so that's the end of that. Now, this executive session, are we really doing an executive session today, Jennifer?
Um, I think that we are, because we have the materials for five fifty to discuss. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. I was just, I, I, we were, well, going through this agenda so quick. I was hoping to get out by nine. And everyone was all excited, but here we are going into executive session.
Well, I don't, I, I don't think it will be particularly long.
Oh, good. All right. Okay, so do we have a motion for executive session regarding litigation of, what are we, five fifty? Pending litigation. How about we just blanket it that way? And stipulation judgment. So do we have a motion?
Would the motion be a blanket motion, or would it have to be, Jennifer, separate motion first to discuss and then consider one, one?
Just, just to go into executive session and invite myself and staff to join. And then I assume that Maureen, you'll call me and I, I can, I can patch in Steve and Brian because I do have their numbers in my phone, so I could just add them if you think it would be best.
All right, I make, I make a motion to go into an executive session to discuss pending litigation regarding nineteen oh six Berlin LLC versus Planning Zoning Commission and five fifty to five fifty-four Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC versus Planning Zoning Commission, inviting Planning Zoning Commission staff, including Maureen Juicy and Alexa Gorlick and Town Attorney, same, Jennifer Copola.
Okay.
And, and, and in adjourning the meeting out in executive session.
Yep. Terrific. All right, so that's it. Then do we have the motion second by Ms. Jersey for the discussion? All those in favor? I, those opposed, so move. So Steve and Brian, Jennifer will be calling you on your cell phone, so I hope you are charged. Ready to rock and roll. We'll talk to you soon.
Bye.
Thank you.
That stopped. You exit the meeting, get rid of everyone.